Good evening and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of May 20th, 2024. In accordance with L.B. 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, we will observe a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization represented by such person unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition of the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for council meeting on Monday, May 20th, 2024 is a reminder that due to the Memorial Day holidays, the council will not meet on Monday, May 27th. Next on our agenda would be our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and 3.
All right. Is anyone here present to speak on an item on the consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, or 3? Anyone here to speak on a consent agenda item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please move us forward.
We can now vote on these items. Items 2A through 2H are introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? We'll go to vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers? Oh, excuse me. Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
The next items, please.
Our next item on the agenda would be Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call items 4A and 4B together. Application of Canyon Joe's Barbecue LLC, doing business as Canyon Joe's Barbecue for Class I Liquor License located at 200 South 18th Street, and the related manager application of Joseph T. Hager.
Is anyone here to speak on items 4A and 4B? Seeing no one here to speak as the applicant, is anyone here to speak either in opposition or in favor of this application? Seeing no one, we'll proceed.
I'll call item 4C, Application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as Pinnacle Bank Arena, for an addition of an indoor area measuring approximately 41 feet by 41 feet and an irregular-shaped outdoor area measuring approximately 192 feet by 47 feet at 400 Pinnacle Bank Arena Drive.
Is anyone here to speak on this item? Item 4C. Seeing the applicant not coming forward, would anyone like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this item? Madam Clerk?
We can...
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to move that we approve items 4A, B, and C.
Thank you, Councilman Shob.
Second.
Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
All right. Let's move ahead to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call item 5A, approving the labor contract between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Firefighters Association, Local Number 644, International Associations of Firefighters, for a term effective August 17th, 2023, through August 31st of 2026.
All right.
Hi, Barb McIntyre, Human Resources Director, 575 South 10th Street.
Dave Engler, Fire Chief, 1801 Q Street.
And I am just going to cover, we're very pleased to be here and be able to bring this contract forward today. Highlights of this contract, it is a three-year deal. Those three years, first year salary increases 8%, second year 6%, third year's 4%. There are some operational highlights, which I'll let Dave describe for you.
I guess we've kind of gone over some of them, but ultimately, it's the wages and then there's some vacation, selection, changes. None of it really impacts the overall operation. It's just really cleanup language to get us to the current practices and that sort of thing. But we've also recognized the work of our paramedics on the medic unit and increased the medic unit what we call assignment pay for that, as well as our hazardous materials team. We've added the bomb techs, which are part, they're required to be part of the hazardous materials team, but they were never recognized for their additional training and stuff, so they're added to that. Did I miss anything there?
No, I think that was it.
Okay. Any questions from council members?
I'd like to comment that, Dave, I really appreciate the work of the Lincoln Fire Department and the City of Lincoln. It's just really a leadership operation. I've talked with plenty of your staff last several months and what have you, and just very impressive, and to see the quality of the work that shows up. I drove up on that totality accident, 56th and Cooper, saw your rigs and parametrics, you know, running to aid that driver, and Lincoln should be very proud of its fire department.
Well, thank you. They all do excellent work. They're committed, well-trained. Obviously, we appreciate the support that you give us to get us there, but it's also EMS week, so it's a good week to recognize them and all the great work that they do.
Yeah, yeah, really, for all of us on council, thank you for the hard work of your entire team, and Director McIntyre, thank you for your hard work in getting us to this contract, and I'm glad to see that we reached a resolution that works for the union and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone here like to comment on this, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Clerk, we may move on.
I'll call item 5B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24007, application of the Urban Development Department to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan, an amendment to the Greater Downtown Principal Corridors Redevelopment Project within the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan, Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan, and North 27th Street Corridor Redevelopment to add the Central at South Haymarket Redevelopment Project to the list of redevelopment project areas to be excluded from the Greater Downtown Principal Corridors Redevelopment Project Area, and to update the list and map of redevelopment project areas to be removed from the overall project boundary upon substantial completion, and to revise the amount of TIF available for the projects. The associated cost-benefit analysis for the overall project boundary, including publicly and privately owned property roughly bounded by 9th to 28th Streets between North Side of P and South Side of N, and 9th and 10th Streets from South Side of K to North Side of S Streets, located in Sections 231006, 231006, excuse me, 261006, 251006, 241006, 191007, 301007. Lincoln Lancaster County generally located at N to P Streets from 9th to 28th and 9th to 10th Streets from K to S Streets.
Director Heinz.
Peter Heinz, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. Great to be with you today. I echo your, my son is an EMS person, and so we're celebrating him this week, too. It's a really good time. This project in front of us is, it's exciting to see this evolve. It is called the Greater Downtown Principal Corridors Redevelopment Project. I'm just going to call it the Downtown Corridors Project today, if that's okay. That might save us an hour. Really, we're going to focus on two things, and one is the map amendment, and then the second thing, we'll talk about just the expansion of the TIF amounts that we're looking at. And as a reminder, March 30th of 2020, we created the Downtown Principal Corridors Redevelopment Revitalization Project. I can't even say it. And then on October 2022, we removed several of the projects that have their own TIF districts that were heading towards substantial completion. So in this amendment, we're doing the map revision and also the TIF revision, so I'll just present the map revision, and I'm going to zoom in in just a moment. So this map, the dark purple are projects that have been removed from the downtown corridors, and the lighter pink or lighter purple are ones that'll be proposed to remove as well. The project that we're looking at taking out right now, and I've lost my pen, oh, I found my pen again, is right here, between 9th and 10th on N Street. That project is in discussions right now with our department, and that's the one that we're looking to put on the list to be removed. Any questions on this map right now and that amendment that we're looking to have you act on?
I have one question, just for clarification for everyone. Could you explain why projects are being removed?
Yes, so the district is an entire district, as was so eloquently laid out in terms of 9th Street to 27th and the sort of boundary of the district. As a project becomes a redevelopment project, it essentially creates its own sort of mini district, if you will. So if you're doing a project on a particular block, that then becomes its own TIF district, and we have a map that goes with that, so it's sort of individual pieces get removed from this larger piece. And so the larger piece, then, we can be using those TIF dollars for improvement around the district, and so that's why we sort of remove them as they happen.
Thank you.
As projects get developed, we reevaluate the amount of TIF available that is generated, and I'll just zoom on, oh, look at that, that was zoomed in just about perfectly. You'll see I've indicated some tick marks on the right-hand side where we're 2022, 2023, and 2024, where you'll see we go from 37 million to 66 million to 118 million, and then it sort of gradually increases from there. Those increases are from particular projects that have been brought online that we're seeing those increments happen from the assessed value that are on the books there. Any questions about this chart and these increases that we're seeing over time? Again, this doesn't project any projects that may happen that we haven't had conversations about. So if there's an empty block that becomes another TIF district, we could see even more increases going forward.
All right.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I had for you today. Longest description, shortest presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
All righty. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition of this item? All right, then we will move forward. Madam Clerk.
Item 5C is approving the consultant agreement between the City on behalf of the City of Lincoln's Risk Management Division and North Risk Partners LLC to provide consulting and insurance brokerage services for a four-year term with the option to renew for two additional two-year terms for some not to exceed $60,000 annually.
Sarah Murtaugh, Risk Management Division Leader for Human Resources, 575 South 10th Street. As a self-insured entity, the City of Lincoln relies heavily on our partnership and services with our insurance brokers. Our current contract was going to be ending at the end of this fiscal year with Aon, so we went through the formal RFP process and have chosen North Risk Partners. As she stated, the contract is a four-year term with an option to renew two additional two-year terms not to exceed $60,000, already been placed into our budget because this is something that we rely on heavily and that we utilize, so that's where we are at with our contract.
Do my fellow councilors have any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, Sarah. Would anyone here like to speak in favor or in opposition to this proposal? Anyone wanting to speak on this proposal? We will move forward.
We can now vote on these items. I'll call item 5A, approving the labor contract between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Firefighters Association, Local Number 644, International Associations of Firefighters, for a term effective August 17th, 23, through August 31st of 2026, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion? Seeing none.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 5B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24007, application of the Urban Development Department to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan, an amendment to the Greater Downtown Principal Corridors Redevelopment Project within the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan, Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan, and the North 27th Street Corridor Redevelopment to add the Central at South Haymarket Redevelopment Project to the list of redevelopment project areas to be excluded from the Greater Downtown Principal Corridors Redevelopment Project Area, and to update the list and map of redevelopment project areas to be removed from the overall project boundary upon substantial completion, and to revise the amount of TIF available for the project. The associated cost-benefit analysis for the overall project boundary, including publicly and privately owned property roughly bounded by 9th to 28th Streets between North Side of P and South Side of N, and 9th and 10th Streets from South Side of K to North Side of S Streets, located in Sections 231006, 261006, 251006, 241006, 191007, 301007. Lincoln Lancaster County generally located at N to P Streets from 9th to 28th and 9th to 10th Streets from K to S Streets, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 5C is approving the consultant agreement between the City on behalf of the City of Lincoln's Risk Management Division and North Risk Partners LLC to provide consulting and insurance brokerage services for a four-year term with the option to renew for two additional two-year terms for some not to exceed $60,000 annually, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
All right. We'll move forward to public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions.
I'll call items 6A and 6B together. Item 6A and B, approving the land exchange agreement by the buy-in between the City and Cost-Wold Management LLC involving exchange of properties generally located at 7th and M Streets. Additional agreements approved with the land exchange agreement included protective covenants and easements, First Amendment and Restatement of Development Agreement, non-exclusive water quality easement and maintenance agreement, termination of West Landscape Boundary Wall easement, termination of parking easement, access easement, maintenance and enforcement agreement, and right of first refusals in Boundary Wall, pedestrian gate, motor vehicle gates, and fence easement agreements, and the related amendment number one to the real property agreement with the West Haymarket JPA for transfers of real property generally located in West Haymarket, Fourth Edition.
All right, thank you. Director Stuckey Ross, welcome.
Good evening. I have a whole team of people here today to walk you through what we're talking about, so don't worry, your questions will be answered. So, we are here today to talk about a series of items related to South Haymarket Park. As you all know, South Haymarket Park presents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to build an iconic public space that will support the growth of residential living downtown, catalyze economic development, and spark tourism here in the quality-of-life capital of the country. In March, Mayor announced plans to acquire two properties adjacent to the park location, increasing the size of the park by 2.3 acres. The properties were 540L Street and 215 South 7th Street, which is commonly called Block 5. In addition, 600L Street was acquired at the time for the previously vacated right-of-way for pedestrian and vehicular access to the park. So with these actions, we had an opportunity to look at the master plan and account for this expanded space. My colleague Karen Nalo with the Parks Department will walk you through these changes with our new properties, but before I invite Karen up, let me summarize the connected actions before you today. The first up is item 6A, which is a land exchange agreement between the City and Cotswold that will allow for a reconfiguration of our parcel lines to align with the new master plan. Part of this also includes an amended redevelopment agreement, which Hallie will review. There are several provisions related to access, adjacencies, and parking, further defining how our park space will interact with the Cotswold space, and Karen will explain those details. And the second item is 6B, which is the real property agreement related to that Block 5 transfer from the JPA, which Chris Connolly will walk through. So, we'll start with Karen. She'll review the park boundaries and the amended master plan, which is the reason for the action today.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening. Karen Nalo with Lincoln Parks and Recreation, and I have a presentation I'm going to share with you this morning, or this afternoon. Maybe. All right, thank you. To start with, I wanted to share what the original park plan looked like. So you can see on the screen a plan, and then a diagram, just kind of outlining the different elements that we had as part of that original plan, and a few items that I wanted to note that are key to our discussion today would be with the Block 5 development that Maggie referenced. We did have access off of 7th Street that would supply access to their parking to the north, as well as a park drive that provided parking, and then specifically shared-use parking with Wollum in this location. As we look at this plan, you'll also note that south of this area, we did not have any access to the park. This was all private property as it wrapped around to the south. Now, with our acquisition of these two properties, you can see we've made a significant change to the park. On the north side, you can see where the Block 5 property was, and then also 540 here in the southeast corner. And with this, we were able to rethink that access to the park and to the parking lot because we no longer needed to provide access off of 7th Street, which was a benefit because we already had M Street, we had the Wollum driveway, and then this additional park drive. Now we're able to align a park drive at 6th and L Street and provide that parking really central to the park itself. In addition to this, we're able to look at a few of our park amenities and relocate them. If you remember on that last page, we actually had the skate park to the south. We were able to bring that forward to the north and increase the size dedicated to the skate park. Were able to capitalize on Canopy Street and create a real terminus with the park, inviting people in, and creating a new hearth feature, creating that gathering space at that corner. If you remember, we also had the canopy swings and green space directly off of N Street. We're now able to bring that into the heart of the park and create a very calm, peaceful location for that amenity while wrapping it around with the ability to plant with trees and create shade. We're also adding in a community building and increasing the playground area, so quite a number of significant changes that have been a benefit to this park. And we're continuing to develop that park. So that was the master plan, and what we see on the screen now is what we're calling our schematic design plan, so it's more detailed, and we'll continue to develop these details further through the summer and start to develop construction documents then in the fall. And with this plan, I wanted to show you some of the diagrams that you have in your packet, starting with the land exchange plan. And so on this plan here, you can see the two properties that we're talking about with the blue area highlighting the Wollum land that is being exchanged, and the red highlighting the city's property. And this white line here represents the existing wall that's wrapping around Wollum that will become that new boundary for Wollum. We also wanted to show another diagram related to that parking. I mentioned that we were able to create a driveway off of 6th and L Streets, a much safer connection. That south area will still be dedicated park, parking, and then the north area will be that shared-use parking. If you remember, again, this was originally located on the north side of that wall, of Wollum's wall, and will now be central to the park. In addition to this, with that shift of parking location and site access, John Wollum graciously offered the original parking area that's north of the wall to the park, to South Haymarket Park, provided it remains a dedicated green space. The provisions of this protective covenant are in line with how our department envisions this space, as I mentioned earlier, with the master plan, and does not create a hardship in any way for the park taking this on. The last item I wanted to note as part of this was the water quality unit and the maintenance easement. You can see on the plan where it's located. Again, this was originally installed when the area to the north was going to be parking, and so this easement allows for ongoing maintenance and access to that unit and to the storm line that connects it to the public storm sewer. So with that, I'm now going to invite Hallie Salem to review the items related to urban development.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening, council members. Hallie Salem, Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th. I just wanted to go over the land exchange agreement, including that First Amendment restatement of the redevelopment agreement. When we first negotiated that redevelopment... When we first negotiated that redevelopment agreement in 2022, that redevelopment agreement did not necessarily know fully what would be developing as part of the park, including that 540 and 600 L Street properties. There were some assumptions made about that parking. Karen covered that very well. And so I'm just going to actually go back to that slideshow soon. So that Cotswold redevelopment project, very much in line with the South Haymarket redevelopment, the changes to parking again, and Seventh Street's streetscape, which this restated agreement refers to, N Street crossings, and then it starts to fold in some of that acquisition to 540 and 600 L, that Sixth Street access, as well as the improvements to the South Haymarket Park, all still very much in line with that South Haymarket redevelopment project this applies to. So Karen referred to that shared off-street parking area that was once on that north side of the Wollum parking lot to their building and the L-shaped drive, and then the truck access as well, the commercial vehicular access. And then, so that new restated redevelopment agreement or development agreement refers to many of those original items, just restating those, as well as giving a timeline for the Seventh Street streetscape and alley that identifies the earliest timeline we would start in summer of this year and likely to be carried out through the fall. The truck access and shared parking, as I mentioned, temporary parking rights. So when we negotiated the original agreement, we negotiated thirty-five, approximately thirty-five stalls in that shared parking agreement. The new shared parking west of the Cotswold addition, I'll go down to that slide, will be accessible from Sixth Street, as Karen mentioned, and while that previous allowed for entry off of Seventh Street, this is now taken off of L Street and/or accessible through the Cotswold property. And those are thirty-two stalls that the construction schedule will be more in line now with the actual park rather than the original schedule, which would allowed for the construction of those shared stalls prior to the park opening. Because of that delay, the city, to fulfill the original terms of that development agreement, is going to provide access to parking at a number of locations depending on the Cotswold building's choice. So it will be up to them to choose whether or not they want to be in a parking facility or on-street or at Rosa Parks Way underpass. So that parking will be at no cost to them until we can fulfill the terms of that original agreement by providing that north lot. When the north lot is complete, they will have permanent right to use those thirty-two stalls during business hours, hours of operation, and then when that is not in use for business hours, then that is park parking, so after-hours weekends. And now I'd like to invite Kathy Russelmeier of JA Wollum Company to come forward. While she is stepping up, I would also like to mention and congratulate Kathy and the Cotswold team on the 2024 Preservation Association of Lincoln Award for Integration Old and New.
Thank you, Hallie. Good evening, city council members. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. To begin, I'm going to tell you briefly about the JA Wollum Company as soon as I figure out the computer. Here we go. Okay, so John Wollum started this company in 1987, thirty-seven years ago, and from there, when he first started, he had two employees. Currently, today, we have seventy-two employees. All employees have had a college degree or are working on one, and eighty-five percent of our employees come from Nebraska schools. The JA Wollum Company is the world leader in manufacturing and sales of ellipsometers. What's an ellipsometer? It's a measuring tool that uses polarized light to determine optical properties of material. If you have any other questions, you can ask him. We currently have two hundred and fourteen patents for going through the process. R and D is one of our greatest strengths. Here are a few examples of instruments that we've had over the years. We continue to innovate, and many of the older instruments are still out in the field. We sell to a wide variety of industries such as semiconductor, optical coatings, and the display industry. In 2019, we began working with the city. Together, we created a park, Wollum driveway, lighting, landscaping, and shared parking. At the parks, as the parks evolved, we found ourselves back at the table to work again. After many, many meetings and great collaboration, we came up with another development agreement, as you have heard from Karen and Hallie. I'd like to show you a few renderings of our building. This is from the Seventh and M Street looking southwest. Here you'll see a picture of our old, shorter building connected to the new addition. Here's the northeast view, and from the northwest corner, looking southeast. Our target date to being done and moving in is July first, so we're really close, and it's a very, very exciting project for us. Last but not least, I would like to give a huge thank you to the city staff and everyone who worked so hard on this project, and I thank you all for this evening. I'm going to pass it back over to Maggie.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think Chris Connolly is up next to talk about item six B, and then we will take questions on everything.
Good evening, Chris Connolly, 555 South Tenth Street, City Law Department. You'll recall that about a year ago, we came to you with regard to a transaction where the JPA was conveying its interest in Block Five, which is the property on the northeast corner of where the park is. And at that time, the idea was to facilitate a commercial development that was expected to occur on Block Five. That project did not materialize, and so over the course of the last year, we've been having ongoing discussions, JPA staff and board, and the city as to what should happen with Block Five. And as a result of that, we felt that, on behalf of the JPA, that the Block Five ought to be incorporated into the park, that it would be a great benefit to the park, and so we are here today, a year later, asking for your approval of an agreement, of an amendment to the agreement from last year, to allow the city to actually own the property outright. Last year, when the property was conveyed, it was for the purpose of, as I said, conveying that, doing that deal, but then any final approval was still going to have to be with the JPA in terms of the price. Now we've got that resolved. We believe that the benefit of the park to the city is going to be sufficient consideration to allow for this to be a one-dollar transaction, and so that's what we're going to ask you to do today. JPA has always supported the concept of the South Haymarket Park and has given land and money before to its development, and we feel that this is going to be a great improvement and make it a much better park. We do believe that the park itself will become an economic driver for the whole West Haymarket area, and so again, we expect some financial benefit to have it as well. And other than that, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much. Does any of the councilors have questions, either of Mr. Connolly or anyone else who presented today? Mr. Beckius.
I don't have a question for you, Chris, I apologize. But, and really not a question for the entire team, as I was reading through the land use exchange agreement that you guys have proposed, I just wanted to offer a kudos to the entire team as you've walked through this project and re-walked through this project as new iterations come about. The work has been really, really impressive, and just also wanted to mention and to thank Kathy and the Wollum team in terms of always being a great partner for this city park, and the new building's looking quite nice, so I think we're all anxious to see it. But thank you for your continued interest in the park, and thank you for always being willing to go back and forth as new iterations of the park come to fruition, and being the closest neighbor to the park, always being willing to say, hey, how can we make this a great solution for the City of Lincoln? We really, really appreciate that. Having those type of partnerships and those type of neighbors are what makes projects like this succeed. So thank you very, very much, and thank you for the entire team that worked on this. It continues to work on this, it's not done yet, there are years to go, but the simple amount of work that went into the land exchange agreement is a lot, and thank you very much for all of that. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mr. Duden.
Just a question for somebody here, because I know that property at one time was also the home of Nine Iron and Metal, and so I know, I just wanted to know if there was some remediation things that were done to the property to make sure that it's the ground's safe, all that kind of stuff. And since I'm probably the oldest council member up here, I probably, nobody even remembers Nine Iron and Metal being down there.
Alder Scrap was the last owner prior to the JPA taking over, and yes, there was a lot of remediation that was done in the area. We have a cap on top of everything, and we have a no further action letter from NDEE, which means we've done basically all we can do. There's one little piece on the far northeast corner that was not originally included that, we kind of called it the Jacobson property, but that has undergone Phase One. Phase Two is going to be getting done here very shortly, and to the extent that any remediation needs to be done there, that will be done. The only reason why, that was a separate piece of property, it was not Alder Scrap, and so, and was not included in the original area that the JPA took over, which is really the rest of what's called the tornado. And so if there's additional work that needs to be done, and we anticipated that, you know, a year ago, when this was getting started, that if something needed to be done, we would take care of it at that time.
Very good. The only other comment I wanted to say is that, in talking to some businesses recently, there's always this feeling that the Harris overpass, the bridge, is kind of a dividing line for Haymarket area, and I think it's nice to be able to have some things on the south side of that bridge, which will kind of, probably kind of bring the whole area kind of together type of thing, so.
Absolutely.
It'll be a plus, I think, for the downtown. Thank you very much for your work.
I'd just like to make a short comment. I served on the Park and Rec Advisory Board a long time ago in the Dark Ages, and I remember having conversations in the late 90s about the potential that there might be for a South Haymarket Park, and it is so exciting to see it come even yet closer to actually being created. And I can see your handprint, Kathy, on the easement language that asked that it remain green space, so thank you. It's fully in line with where the Parks Department was going, but I can also see where your hand was in that as well. So thank you all. It's been quite an experience to watch this come together, and you've all shown how creative and flexible you are capable of being. Thank you. Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask. I got so excited giving kudos. Would anyone here like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? Would anyone like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item six C, amending the pay schedule for certain employee groups by adjusting the pay range for employees whose classifications are assigned to the pay ranges prefixed by the letter F to be effective August 17, 2023.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Director McIntyre. Hi.
Hi, Barb McIntyre, 575 South Tenth Street, HR Director. This is the corresponding pay plan that supports the IAF contract we talked about earlier today, so it reflects that eight percent increase we talked about that goes into effect August 17 of 2023, so it does go retro, but that's what that item is.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right. Would anyone here like to speak on this item? Either in support or opposition? All right, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item six D, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 12.08.010, definitions to clarify the definition for hiker-biker trail by amending Chapter 12.08 by adding a new section numbered 12.08.025 entitled "Operation on Trails Prohibited," to prohibit operation of certain motorized vehicles on shared-use paths in hiker-biker trails, and by amending Section 12.08.280 Rules and Regulations Waterways to clarify the prohibition of swimming, bathing, or wading in fountains.
Director Stucky Ross.
Good evening, I'm back. We have an ordinance change before you tonight to assist the Parks Department in the management of our assets and the safety of our residents. First, we're going to talk about fountains. So the current ordinance we have prohibits swimming, wading, bathing, and other activities in certain city-owned waterways. The list of waterways, however, does not include fountains. By adding fountains to the list, we will be explicit in our direction that wading in fountains is not permitted. These fountains were built for aesthetic purposes to contribute to the beauty of various parks, and while the water may be inviting, the design of display fountains simply does not provide safe conditions. The water in the fountain is not tested, treated, or disinfected to meet water quality standards required for swimming pools. Our water is not skimmed or filtered to prevent scum or floating material in the basin. Fountains are not supervised by lifeguards or staff to prevent potential dangers to individuals, and sharp edges and rough surfacing pose injury risks, especially to young people. That's why we have signage on-site at all of our fountains, reminding the public that swimming and wading is not allowed. The amendment in front of you will ensure that the legal language aligns with our signage and our practices. As temperatures begin to rise and people seek ways to cool off, we strongly encourage residents to take advantage of our nine public pools or the Trago Sprayground for water fun, all of which open one week from today, and not to take a dip in our display fountains. The second piece of this is about motorized vehicles on trails. The Action Before Council does two things tonight. First, it clarifies what trails we're talking about in city code when it states that it's unlawful to operate a motor vehicle on a trail over 25 miles an hour, and secondly, to explicitly prohibit certain types of motor vehicles. First, on the definition of trails. Today, we're clarifying that this includes multi-use trails and hiker-biker trails. Well, what's the difference? A hiker-biker trail is a pathway within a park with no destination outside of the park. You might think of a looped pathway at Trendwood Park, at Woods Park, at Easterday Park, or Mahoney Park. Multi-use trails are the interconnected system of trails in our community that you know and love, Murdoch, Billy Wolf, Bison, Jamaica, Rock Island, and more. In all of these situations, both those internal pathways in a park and the multi-use connected trail system, motor vehicles that go over 25 miles per hour are prohibited. Secondly, we're asking for the following specific vehicles to be expressly prohibited: mopeds, golf carts; motor vehicles, motorcycles; tractors, off-road vehicles, go-karts, riding lawn mowers, garden tractors, all-terrain vehicles, snowmobiles, and gas-powered lawn mowers, garden tractors, all-terrain vehicles, snowmobiles, and gas-powered bicycles. A broad and constantly evolving range of electrically powered devices like e-bikes and e-scooters are entering the marketplace, and their use is growing in Lincoln. Multiple city departments will be coming together in the coming months to look at the new landscape and ensure that our local laws are clear and consistent in that area. With the beautiful spring weather upon us, we have seen an uptick in reports of unlawful motorized vehicles on our trails. Residents are encouraged to call LPD non-emergency in the event that they encounter someone using the trails in this way. I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you, Director Stuckey-Ross. Are there any questions from councilmembers? Councilman Duden? Sorry.
It says in the ordinance that, maybe this is a question for you once as well, that it shall mean and include any vehicle propelled by power other than muscular power. So are we saying that no electric bikes, period, on trails?
I'll have my law partner.
She'll do better. I apologize.
No, you're fine. Jocelyn will take it. Jocelyn Golden, Assistant City Attorney. We're not, this is not an ordinance intended to address e-bikes at all. E-bikes in Class 1, 2, and 3 are pedal assists, so you can use your muscular power or you can rely upon the electric device, but that's not what we're trying to address with this ordinance. We're purely trying to address those types of motor vehicles that, you know, are gas-powered or go-karts, your golf carts, et cetera.
Aren't mopeds the same way, though?
Mopeds are what?
Pedaling or power.
I honestly don't know how a moped works, so.
You know? What's that? Do I know? I'm not sure.
Okay. But we have separate definitions throughout the code for mopeds, motor vehicles, bicycles. So, yep.
Okay. Have you gotten your questions answered?
I'm not sure, because I see a lot of e-bikes on the trails, so.
They'll come back to that eventually.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the next step.
Yep.
Councilman.
I was just going to ask, did this go through Parks and Rec Advisory Board at all? And was those issues vetted out with them?
We have talked with the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee on this topic. So they're aware we're doing this, and they are definitely encouraging the department to take on the conversation about e-bikes. It's a regular conversation at that board about misuse of trails. And we think it's really important from a safety perspective, from wear and tear on the trails. We're just seeing more and more e-bikes on trails in Lincoln. And so looking at our peer communities and working with LTU and LPD to make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to e-bike use. Again, not part of today's action, and today, as long as you're not going over 25 miles an hour, your e-bike is permitted on the trail.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman, I have one question, if you don't mind. It has to do with the 25 miles per hour, and not to be a pinhead on this one, but I know that you said gas-powered and a vehicle that can go over 25 miles per hour. Does it mean that that vehicle has to be going over 25 miles an hour to be prohibited, or just has the ability to go over 25 miles an hour and/or be gas-powered?
No, so motor vehicles are separately defined. It's that muscular power. There's a separate ordinance in Chapter 12.08 that talks about speed limits for 25 miles per hour. So that's kind of how I, you know, looked at both of those and how we would determine. If there was an e-bike or something else that was going over 25 miles per hour, then at that point, we would say you're violating the law, but not under this particular ordinance that we're trying to adopt.
I understand it's, you're crosswalking a lot of things.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Councilman Duden? I mean, I'm so sorry, Beckus, I looked right at you.
Too many Toms. I just wanted to thank you both. I think that the intent here is really clear. The muscular power versus other gas power, electric power, that's actually not being changed as a part of this ordinance. That's already there. We're not looking at that. I appreciate the upfrontness regarding e-bikes. I think the intent's really clear and really sensible in terms of what we're wanting to prohibit on trails, to not only not damage the trail, but to ensure use, enjoyable use of all users of the trail. So thank you for that work. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll see if there's any comments from the public. If so, we might ask you to come back. Yes, if you'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition, please come forward or be ready to come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Lincoln City Council. My name is Ken Winston. I'm appearing on behalf of the Great Plains Trails Network and the Nebraska Sierra Club. My address is 4021 Terry Lane in Lincoln. Great Plains Trails Network raises thousands of dollars every year that support building and maintaining trails in Lincoln and Lancaster County. We are proud of our efforts in developing and supporting a great trails network for this community. We also want everyone to have a safe and enjoyable experience on the trails. The Nebraska Sierra Club is a local chapter of the nation's oldest and largest grassroots environmental organization. We have approximately 3,000 members in the state. We appreciate the fact that this proposed, these proposed changes are creating standards to address safety and proper types of vehicles that can use the trails. Both organizations support the adoption of the changes in this proposed ordinance. To be quite frank, I thought that it was already illegal to drive a moped on the trails. And so I'm, it's like, okay, about time, let's do this. I guess I also wanted to say, Councilman Duden, I identify with the question you're asking, because I think there's, I think there needs to be more clarification about what is legal and what is not legal with relation to the e-bikes. Because when it's, because the definition of motor vehicle says with no, now I can't find it, with no, by power other than muscular power. Well, electric motor is other than muscular power. So I would encourage, and I heard the, heard Director Stuckey say that she's planning to address that issue, and I think that's important. So I would encourage the council to continue to look at that. And I guess I want to, I don't have an e-bike myself. I still use the old-fashioned kind where you provide all the power yourself. But there's a lot of good things about e-bikes. I mean, I know there are people who use them for zero-carbon, zero emissions transportation. They commute with them, and that's a great thing. And then I see these families where the mom or the dad has got the kids in the little basket in front or basket in back, and they can haul a lot more with an e-bike than they can with, if they're just powering it themselves. So I think that's great, and I really, we really encourage those kinds of, that kind of approach, and the fact that it's enabling people to do that. It also gets a lot more people outside and enjoying, getting some exercise and enjoying fresh air. So all those are good things. But I've also been on the trails when, I'm out on the trails every day and have been for years, and either walking my dog or jogging or riding my bike. And so I get to see a lot of stuff going on. And there are times when an e-bike would just go flying by me. I don't know how fast they're going, but I bet it's faster than 25 miles an hour. And sometimes there's no pedal action happening. So I think we need to look at that kind of stuff and figure out what is an appropriate standard for an e-bike for the city of Lincoln. Because, I mean, it's okay if they're just out there by themselves and there's nobody else on the trail, but sometimes on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, I'm right, the Rock Island Trail's right by my house. Sometimes I'm out there on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, and the trail's just crowded with people, all kinds of people. Little kids and, you know, some little kid learned how to ride a bike for the first time. And people walking their dogs and families just out for a walk. So we need to make sure, we don't want, I mean, having somebody going 25 miles an hour or faster could be unsafe for the other people. So anyway, I really appreciate the suggestion that Director Stuckey is making that we'll address this fully, and I really think that's important. So be glad to work with her office and the city attorney's office and coming up with some language to make sure we're addressing that. The other thing is enforcement. I mean, it's no good to put something on the books if it's not enforced. And like I said, I'm out there all the time, and I've been out there for years, and I can't recall ever seeing a police officer patrolling the trail. I mean, and so I think it might be good to occasionally have, and I recognize that there's a lot of work that our police department has to do, but it would be good if there were occasionally, you know, a patrol person out there riding their bike down the trail and just.
I did, once upon a time.
You did? Okay, all right, well.
At least mountain bike patrol, so.
Well, glad to hear. Well, I would like to encourage that to happen again.
Very good.
So, so anyway, and I guess the other thing would be, at the very least, to have some signage that says, this is illegal, don't do it. And, because I, sometimes I wake up at night and I hear those mopeds going down the trail. It's like, why aren't these people being arrested? I don't want them on the trail. So anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'd be glad to respond to questions and appreciate your work on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Councilman Bowers?
So just a quick question. This isn't a question I would ask typically, but you're an attorney, so I'll ask you this question. In response to Tom's question, because I agree that that's a valid question, is there a language that you have in mind of what would be appropriate that the council should consider?
Um, well, I'm going to do the attorney thing and say, let me get back to you, Councilman. So, no, I mean, I mean, I had a conversation with the city attorney this morning and threw out some ideas, but I think it'd be better if we had some more time to reflect on it and exchange ideas as opposed to just me throwing something out here at the council hearing. So that would be my suggestion, would be to work with the city attorney's office and with the Parks Department on language.
Thanks.
So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to add just a little historical perspective, because once upon a time downtown Lincoln, it was illegal to ride a skateboard on the sidewalk, bicycle on the sidewalk. And it was between 9th to 17th R to Q, or no, R, no, M to Q Street. It was a restricted area. They had signs posted, and it was enforced. And it all came about when a woman walked out of a department store along O Street and was struck by a bicyclist and was killed. And so, yeah, speed is going to be an issue with, I think, some of these e-bikes, especially when you see families with strollers and what have you using the same trails at the same time. So it's a, I think it's a safety concern that needs to be addressed.
Absolutely. I completely agree with you. And I'm going to display my ignorance here, but Councilman Duden, I thought it was still illegal to ride bicycles on, in downtown. I will defer to the city attorney.
Like the enforcement went away, maybe.
But, but, yeah, I, yeah, I think it's, well, it's my understanding, it's still illegal to ride bicycles on the sidewalks downtown.
Why they added bike lanes and what have you.
Yeah, yeah.
Combinate that.
So, but yeah, I do think, yes, definitely a safety issue. I mean, not trying to be a fear monger, but we'd hate to see something happen and somebody asking, why didn't they do something about it? So yes, definitely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Winston.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Winston.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak on this?
I had a question for Maggie.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Yeah, thanks. Mr. Winston brought up the issue of signage, and I assume if this passes today, there'd be some changes to the signage on the trails, or would this be longer term coming down the pipeline as other changes come forward?
Yeah, we have park regulation signage in all of the facilities that we operate and along the trails. We would want to make sure that it's consistent with the action that you've taken today. I believe it just says no motor vehicles can be operated, which we are amending the definition of motor vehicle, so I think it's still applicable, but very safe to say if there are changes that need to be made, we will make those changes.
Thank you.
Clarifying question. All right, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no one else who'd like to speak in opposition or in support, we will move forward. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We can move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll call Item 7A, text amendment 24004, request to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.67.040. Parking requirements, special conditions to remove parking requirements for restaurants, social halls, and on-premises alcohol sales for the B2 and B5 zoning districts as it is no longer required, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Let's call the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is Change of Zone 24011, application of Nick Dwyer to change his zone from AGR Agriculture Residential District to R3 Residential District on the property generally located at South 70th and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Yes?
Thank you to the developer for bringing additional residential healthcare facilities to the community. I think as our community and our population ages, these uses will become more and more important to the city of Lincoln. So thank you to that developer for bringing this product forward.
Any other discussion? Let's call the vote.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D is Annexation 23008, application of Pacific Empire Developers, Inc. to annex approximately 37.75 acres, more or less, and the adjacent North 70th Street right-of-way on the property generally located at the northwest corner of North 70th Street and Arbor Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Let's call the vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7E is Change of Zone 23057, application of Pacific Empire Developers to change the zone from AGR Agriculture District to I-1 Industrial District totaling approximately 34.24 acres, more or less, on the property generally located at the northwest corner of North 70th Street and Arbor Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7F is approving the conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the city and Pacific Empire Developers, Inc. for the property generally located at northwest corner of 70th and Arbor Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7F is approving the conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the city and Pacific Empire Developers, Inc. for the property generally located at northwest corner of 70th and Arbor Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved.[1667.33]
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right.
That concludes our Section Seven. Section Eight is Resolutions First Readings, Items Eight A and Eight B. Section Nine is Ordinance's First Reading and Related Resolutions, Items Nine A through Nine D. And Section Ten is our pending list, Items Ten A through Ten J.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is the last meeting of the month, and so there is open public comment this evening. Um, as was stated at the very beginning, uh, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for this date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. I think you're all familiar with our clock. You have five minutes. You may speak on any number of topics you choose. When you are down to one minute, the clock moves from green to yellow, and when you are out of time, the clock shows red. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, come forward now. We have two microphones available, so if there is a second speaker, also come forward and be prepared.
All right. Hello, my name's Anastasia Finnerle, Level Twenty-three Fifteen, D Street. A couple of things that I want to do today, which is one, direct, kind of, uh, address one of you a little directly, and then the other, oh. And then address you a little bit more broadly, but first I would like to, uh, generally, uh, address Tom Beckius. First, I'd say it's very interesting to meet someone who gave, uh, or a company that gave six thousand dollars to your campaign, but there is a different one, aside from John Awolam, uh, that is the Bold Alliance. And they donated a thousand dollars to your campaign to get you here. And I just wanna read the mission statement or kind of the about of, uh, what Bold Alliance is. And it says on their website, it says, "We fight pipelines and big corporations that threaten the land and water. We build clean energy projects that benefit rural communities. The Bold Alliance is a network of small but mighty groups in rural states working to protect land and water, fight fossil fuel project, protect land, uh, pro, landowners against eminent domain abuse, and work for clean energy resolutions while building an engaged, engaged base of citizens who care about the land, water, and climate change. The Bold Alliance works with unlikely alliances of farmers, ranchers, tribal nations, and progressives to stop risky fossil fuel and industrial food projects with the grassroots style that we used to stop the Keystone XL." I don't think that I need to read all of that to ask you if you think that, uh, allowing somewhere like General Dynamics to continue to exist, uh, is in the same spirit as that. And I would just like to show real fast this. This, this is a rural woman, a farmer, much like who allegedly was, uh, donating to your campaign. And this is what happens when we allow murderous entities like Israel to, uh, destroy the land. Those are olive trees, and clearly you can see that there is a severe connection between that person and that tree that has been decimated. Uh, and now I would like to address you more, uh, you know, as the entire council, to, uh, to read a couple excerpts of the Geneva Convention from, uh, nineteen forty-nine, right? Oh my gosh. And particularly, uh, I would like to read, um, about the children. Oh my, well, I would love to if my phone would cooperate. And this is under, um, you know, people in like occupied territories, you know, and then, uh, protect, well, particularly like also protected peoples. And so this reads, "The occupying power shall, with the cooperation of national and local authorities, facilitate the proper working of all institutions devoted for care and education of children. The occupying power shall take all necessary steps to facilitate the identification of children and the registration of their parentage. It may not in any case change the personal status nor enlist them in information or organizations subordinate to it. Should local institutions be inadequate for the purpose, the occupying power shall make arrangements for the maintenance and education, if possible, by persons of their own nationality, language, and religion, of children who are orphaned or separated from their parents as a result of the war and who cannot be adequately cared for, uh, by a near relative or friend. A special section of the Bureau set up in accordance with Article One Thirty-Six shall be responsible for taking all necessary steps to identify children whose identity is in doubt. Particulars of their parents or other near relatives should always be recorded if available. The occupying power shall not hinder the application of any preferential measures in regards to food, medical care, protection against the war, which may have been, uh, adopted prior to the occupation in favor of children under fifteen years, expectant mothers and mothers of children under seven." The Lincoln City Council is doing war crimes. The ICC recently called for Benjamin Netanyahu to be arrested. You need to act in self-preservation.
Time.
It is the little people, y'all, who will go down for not stopping the bleeding. That is, uh, General Dynamics.
Truly, one zero zero two zero, White Pyro, I want to start off with, uh...
But the people are in the streets. You could pay off Meta, you can't pay off me. Politician, too certain by any means, AIPAC, Kofi, and all the companies. You see we so fear around the land of the free, but this generation here is about to cut us straight. You could ban TikTok, take us out the algorithm, but it's too late. We seen the truth, we bear witness. Seen the rubble, the buildings, the mothers and the children, and know the men that you murdered. And then we see how you spin it. Who gets the right to defend and who gets the right of resistance? It's always been about dollars and the color of your picnic. But white supremacy is finally on blast, screaming, "Free Palestine!" to their home in last. We see the lies and claiming it's anti-Semitic to the anti-Zion, assaulting Jewish brothers and sisters out there in riot and in solidarity and screaming, "Free Palestine!" with them organizing and learning and finally cutting ties with the state that's gotta rely on apartheid system to uphold an occupying violent history been repeating for the last seventy-five. The neck but never ended, the colonizer lie. If students intent posted on the lawn, occupying the quad is really against the law. And the reason to call and the police and their squad where the genocide land in your definition, huh? Destroying every college in Gaza and every mosque, pushing everyone into Rafah and dropping bombs. The blood is on your hands, Biden, we can see it all, and fuck no, I'm not voting for you in the fall. Undecided, you can't twist the truth, the people out here united. Never be defeated when freedom's on the horizon. Get the music and the shit quiet, you're clussing in their platform of silence. What happened to the artist? What you gotta say? If I was on a label, you could drop me today. I'll be fine with it 'cause the heart fed my page. I wanna cease fire. Fuck a response.
Say it again, sorry?
Uh, is there more cursing? Is there a G version?
But anyway, uh, you can watch the whole thing of it. Um, this is Marco Moore with his newest song. The reason why I show it is because he's using his platform. And not only him, there's a lot of other people using their platform to be able to use their voice, right? The student occupied the lawn, the student at their commencement showing the flag. There's just so many people. Last week I talked about a prisoner who sent all he paycheck for the whole month, only worked for thirteen cents an hour to donate to Palestine. What have you guys done to help with any of these? Or is it just a word? Solidarity is not just a word, it's an action. Have you been acting on it and continue to act on it, or it's just saying? I'm definitely speaking to you, Sandra Washington. We've been having some conversation and, and I'm looking forward to have more. Uh, this right here I'm showing is a flyer. This is a program from the Lincoln Manufacturing Council. You can see right here by zooming even more is General Dynamics. If you go on the website, you will find that General Dynamics is actually a champion of this organization. General Dynamics membership is champion. What does that means? It means ooh, it's too bright. Oops. It's a little too bright. Okay, there we go. Right here, champion. This is on the benefit that they get, and they contribute five thousand. I don't know if that's a month, a year, or lifelong membership. Anyways, the city is actively sending people to classes to train and then give them an opportunity to work for General Dynamics, which is a company that we've been continuing telling you that killing kids. Do you want to do that? Is that really something you want to do? This is the very first action you can do is to kick them out from this program, to not sending people to work there. They might not even know. They, they might not just come there, they might just come there and work and, and didn't even realize they're doing a bad things. And the city is supporting them, encourage them to go work there, provide the whole program that actually, yes, paying them seven hundred fifty dollars to go to this training and come work for General Dynamics.
Your time is up.
Any question?
No questions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wu Yinglei, and I wanted to use my five minutes today with all of you to pay tribute in silence to all the martyrs in Palestine because there are over thirty thousand people who die in Palestine, including over thirty thousand childrens, with many thousand more under the rock, bro. So I hope you can all join with me today, especially Councilman, Councilman Tom Duden, as the last meeting you seemed very tired. Still, I hope you can join this with me in silence, and I guess I will depend on you to tell when the time, when the time is up.
Your time is up.
I hope you all can do a better job, free Palestine, free Sudan, free Congo, and an end to an empire.
Thank you. Anyone else coming forward to speak? If there's someone else beyond this, please be ready.
Hello, everyone. Um, it was good to listen to all of you a few moments back when they were talking about the speed limits and how it is unsafe to drive above that speed limit in a certain area. And I hope that you do understand that every life's matter, not necessarily those who are born here in the United States, their life matter. It's also applicable for any kids or any human being born anywhere of the world. I hope you could understand that. And now, when, I do know that maybe some of you get some kind of funding from somewhere, but not the general public, they get it. And especially when there are students, especially the students, they have stronger morality compared to other people. Okay, so when they try to protest against this genocide that is happening in Israel and how United States of America is assisting them, um, to commit that genocide, and it's giving them the diplomatic shelter so that they are like, no one can touch, touch them anyhow. So, just to ensure that, how United States of America is, uh, doing it in the college campuses, we have seen that. Okay, and as I am, uh, I'm doing my, I'm studying economics, that's why I feel that I must show it to you how the police is, uh, how they're treating an economics professor of the Emory University. I just want to show it to you.
At some point, would you give your name and address as well?
Um, sure. I'm Ishita, and I'm staying here in Lincoln. Is this the way, uh, I should place it here, right? Okay, thank you. She's an, uh, professor of Emory University, and how police is treating her. So, yeah, this is what we have seen, like how the people who have like, whose soul is not sold to those, uh, people in the power, how they have been treated here in the United States of America. When you were claiming that you have, you ensured the free speech, you ensured the democracy, and it's not North Korea, or it's not, uh, Iran, it's the United States of America, right? And this is the true nature of USA, because you, people have freedom of speech only if it is not against Israel. And you have this statement, "Israel is our greatest ally." Does it make their war crime something different? It's still war crime. It's still war crime. The war crime committed by Israel is still war crime, the, the genocide committed by Israel is still genocide. And another thing is that today, another friend of mine was saying about the, what ICC has declared, they're going to, um, issue arrest warrant against Netanyahu, and I hope you all know that the senators of, uh, Peter Gates of Nebraska, he's one of, two of senators who have issued some letters threatening the ICC. And they issued, the statement was something like that, if ICC issued any arrest warrant against them, then those people in the ICC, they have to, like, go through some, like, it's just like threatening them, and not even threatening them, it's also threatening their families. And this is how the politicians here in the United States behave, because they are all bought, they are all getting money from IPAC, and this is very, very, very unfortunate. And I must say that. And free Palestine, and Palestine belongs to the Palestinian people. If you are so sympathetic, why don't you give one of your states?
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, in the future.
Second?
Second, by acclamation. Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Becky Miller.
Becky Miller.
Meeting is adjourned.